Wow, what a great worship service that we had together. And now we are moving towards our town hall meeting. We have a few little video vignettes that we're going to share with you. And while we do that, we still have people who are at their computer laptops and their phones. And so if you have questions as you view these videos, if you have questions or comments, please get those into those chats and comments. And then we will have some people to field those questions live at our microphones over on the Godsend side. So I'm giving that tip to our camera operators upstairs. So we're gonna have a quick prayer and then following the prayer. You can't hear anything?
No, your tip ended.
Oh, the tip was the video and then the people answering questions will be on the Godsend side. This is how you know we're live, people. So I'm gonna pray and then the first video up is our construction update. So let's pray together. Our gracious and almighty God, what a time for us to be gathered together and the new sense of that word that that means. But we are so glad that you continue to allow our church to move forward, to seek new and fabulous ways to share the gospel love that you have for us. So this day, continue to be with us as we share this information with our congregation. In Christ's name we pray, amen. So we have our construction video first. Woo, let's go.
Good morning, I'm Jim Boganreef and I'm one of your currently serving elders. This morning, I'd like to give you an update on the fire reconstruction of the fellowship hall. By now, most of you know that construction has begun. Hooray for that. It was a lengthy process to get the plans and engineering completed and approved by the city of Anaheim. But all of that is now complete and we are well on our way in the construction process. As part of that process, we were required by the city to upgrade our facilities to current codes. As a result of this, we will now have a new fire sprinkler system in the fellowship hall, ADA compliant bathrooms, a new staircase, and new energy efficient HVAC systems with modern controls. The good news is that our insurance policy is picking up $300,000 worth of these code upgrades. The bad news is that these upgrades will cost us close to about $500,000. Speaking of numbers, I am happy to tell you that we have been approved by our Presbyterian to obtain a new low interest rate loan to help with some of the upgrades and improvements that were not covered by our insurance. We have been approved for a total of $775,000 and the good news is that we will only need to borrow what we truly need. Since a picture's worth a thousand words, let's take a quick look at some of the progress that has been made. But before we do that, I wanted to give a shout out to the ad hoc committee, the group that is really the ones that are managing this project. Our chair, Pete Lapsich, Vanessa Bates, Doug Brown, Jerry Connery, and of course Bruce Kidd, our construction manager who is always on the job. This group is a well-oiled machine and working extremely hard. If you get a chance, please thank one of these individuals and let them know you appreciate all that they do. Thank you.
You guys are live, so you can answer questions that we don't have. Do we have questions over here? So you wowed them, Jim. Like you completely wowed them with the information, so.
I will say one thing, that when the, when we start to fund the loan, there's going to be opportunities for members of the congregation to invest in it as we did the last time we had a mortgage. And the interest rate is significantly better than what can be gotten on a typical CD. And as we get investors on those loans, it actually reduces the amount of interest that the church pays. So right now, we're guaranteed a interest rate of 2.75% for all the things that are green in our project and a little over three for those things that are not green, not environmental. But the bottom line is, is that if we can get some investors out there to participate in the program, earning a higher commission or a higher interest rate than they would earn on a CD with the same kind of safety, the church will see even a lower rate. So more to come on that later.
So I now have questions. So here are some of our questions that we have. What about the downstairs?
Downstairs is a moderate remodel. There will be a new fire sprinkler system, new HVAC, a small redesign of the offices, and new paint. So kind of a freshening up of the downstairs.
All right, and can you describe the layout of the upstairs?
Pretty much the same as it was before, new kitchen. You guys saw the video of kind of the walkthrough. There will be a shower in there now, ADA bathrooms, luxury vinyl flooring throughout the whole thing.
All right, and do we have a completion date?
We do. We expect it to be complete by October 1st. So be prayerful and it should come through.
All right, so that's good. And then, of course, the ever-present elevator question.
What was the question?
Well, the question was, is the elevator part of this project? And then just elevator?
The elevator is a part of the project. We're in the final stages of finalizing the contract. We pushed that out just due to COVID-19. It seemed prudent that we just push that project a few, few weeks, been about a month behind the rest of it. But the stage right now is we're at finalization of contracts.
We're going to an expert contractor on elevators. So we have one contractor working on the renovation and the restoration, and we have a different contractor actually building the elevator because that's our specialty.
All right, and one final question. Will the downstairs offices open soon? October 1st.
October 1st. Yeah, I will tell you this, though. It's going to be really laid out in a much more efficient way and the entrance won't be what it used to be. It'll be the door that used to be Lisa's office. That'll now be the new entry into the office. It's gonna be a few other things that are changed and we can't wait to show it off. And we'll soon be asking our fellowship committee to start planning our open houses and our swinging open the doors and letting everybody in because it's gonna be so exciting.
Our social distance, open houses. Well, thank you both of you very much for being, serving on the committee, for being here today and answering questions. And any other questions from y'all? We've had a, how many people will the elevator hold? And I believe it's like.
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen?
Yeah, it's either 12 or 15.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm just like going like.
Big boy.
All right, so we can social distance in the elevator. Woohoo! Yes, Jerry Rudman, we can stay in the West Campus until October 1st. I think our lease is actually through the 15th.
Yes, it is.
So we're good. All right, so we are gonna change gears and go to the next video, which is about our safe gatherings.
With the advent of the COVID-19 coronavirus, we've been asked by our state and local officials to practice social distancing and adhere to stay-at-home guidelines to slow the transmission of the virus. These stay-at-home orders included the temporary suspension of in-person church services and gatherings. With the safety and health of our congregants and our neighbors in mind, we have moved to virtual worship services that you can enjoy anywhere, along with creative music offerings, in addition to modified small groups, service teams, and workspaces. As the state of California and the county of Orange begin moving into stage two on the roadmap of modifying the statewide stay-at-home order, our session has appointed a task group to develop our safe gatherings, protocols, and guidelines. Our task group includes current and past elders and deacons, some at-large members with particular experience, and several staff members. We are currently reviewing all available guidelines and recommendations from various sources, including the CDC, the state of California, the county of Orange, the Presbyterian Church, and our neighboring sister churches. As we develop recommendations for session regarding protocols for our congregation as guided by state and local standards, when it becomes appropriate to phase in in-person meetings and gatherings, as we complete our work, we will make recommendations to session for their consideration and approval as we look forward to creating a safe environment for faithful gathering when it is reasonable to do so. Canyon Hills Presbyterian Church, you are being strong and courageous, and your faithfulness is an example of the kingdom of God here on earth. Please feel free to contact any member of the task force with questions or ideas. Until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hand.
But I'm not on Facebook yet. Hi, everyone. Sorry, there's like this delay. I was watching on Facebook. Thank you all for watching the video about our safe gathering. So we've put together a task group from our church that are looking at all the different variables so that we can put together a comprehensive plan for our church as it becomes safer for us to gather in smaller groups and then larger groups, how we will use effectively our property, our indoors and our outdoors, so that we might be able to come together again. So we just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at on that. We've met and we're about ready to divide into subgroups and work groups so that we can get that information out to you. So I don't know if, are there, were there questions from? No questions there? No questions? All right, well, I'm gonna give you 10 more seconds to type. Type, 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 type. All right, another like wows them with the video. So our next information that we have to share with you is from Brian Counter, our elder for stewardship. And Vanessa Bates is here to answer questions, and it has to do with our financial update. So please enjoy the next video.
Hello, my name is Brian Counter and I am the elder for stewardship. I hope everyone's doing well and staying safe during these unprecedented times. I'd also like to thank our church staff for all the hard work in transforming the way we continue our ministry. We log in each week to see what Lisa, Matt, and the music programs have for us. Our kids must really enjoy the Sunday School lessons because they're dancing around during the dance party. So I want to give you an update on where we are on our year-to-date contributions. Our pledge contributions are up by $1,250. Our non-pledge contributions are down by $4,700. The reason for that is because we are not meeting in person and that's where the money goes into the offertory plates. Our year-to-date other income is down by $1,300, meaning our total income is down $4,650. The good thing is, it's not all doom and gloom. Due to the shelter in place and the social distancing, it has reduced our expenses by $16,000. So what does he ask? We're asking for those of you that can to do one of a couple of things. One, log into the church app and be able to give a little bit more than you normally do. Or two, when you do write your check to the church, to be able to add a little bit more than you normally do. Or, on a third note, you can invite my kids over and they can look for the loose change in either your car or your furniture. All kidding aside, we appreciate your continued support and are always looking for ways to serve the Lord. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
So a follow-up question to the gathering was, will we continue to livestream? It is our, it is our intention to continue live streaming. I feel like live streaming is here for good. And so we will continue to incorporate that into our worship services so that those of you who are remaining at home or when vacations happen again in a couple of years, you're on vacation, you can still worship with us. Won't it be fantastic? So, and then the comment I got was, Brian Counter, what a great last name for the stewardship elder. So. Yeah, so I am waiting for questions, but while we're waiting, Vanessa, is there anything that you would like to add? And then we'll call on our live audience, Roger Bailey.
Yeah, one thing I do want to add is normally we send out quarterly statements, and so you would have received those in the month of April. However, because of the way that COVID has changed how we live, we decided to wait until the income was in for the end of April. So you will be seeing your contribution statements through the month of April sometime in this month of May. Roger? That's a great question. I can tell you, the elders have spent very little in their budgets. Oh, the question was, where did we realize the $16,000 in savings? Primarily, we're realizing that money in your elders who each have a budget, who have been very good stewards and haven't spent hardly any money in their budget at all. We also have had a reduction in utilities, primarily because we're not in the offices and so our utilities have been dropping. We have had an increase in some expenses because of our livestream, but it hasn't been enough yet to counterbalance the savings that we have encountered over good stewardship for the first four months of this year.
Vanessa, you're planning on presenting to session a revised budget, correct, for the year that reflects what we've learned so far?
Yes, I am. I did send a revised budget out to session. And in that revised budget, we have reduced income, particularly in plate, to match where we are and where we'll likely be for a while. Conversely, we've reduced some of our elders' budget amounts simply because they're not spending it because we're not worshiping in our normal fashion, but we have, in fact, increased a couple to allow more mission work in the community and to allow for increased communications. Our communications have been doing a great job, but it does cost money to send those texts out. It costs money to send the newsletters out and the new technology and hopefully some additional technology that we have coming also will be additional expense. With all that said, our expenses and our income will be less than we originally budgeted.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any other questions that anyone saw coming online? Well, thank you for, both you and Brian for putting that together, letting our church know where we're at. And I do know that actually we have been able to focus more on mission and community service, and so we have resources going in that direction and in our communications. So we've been able to respond appropriately to what is going on and using the resources that we have to continue to show care and compassion to our own congregation, our own family of faith, and out into the community. So that is great news for all of us. So we want to always make sure that you know that there are ways to connect virtually with others within our congregation. And so we have a video about the different small groups and other live events that are going on weekly within our church. So are we ready with that video? Thank you.
Anyhow, I wanted our congregation to know more about what the ways that they might be able to connect through a small group, even though our groups right now are meeting over Zoom, livestream, or there, I know some people share through our social media and stuff, and those are the ways that they can get connected. So I wanted you all to be able to share about the things that you're doing because I'm really grateful for the workers.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Yeah, our, our home group has about doubled in size since the self-isolation went into place, but that's great. We're doing it on Zoom. We're doing it right now on a study of the differences between different Christian denominations and how those came to be. It's one of the topics that the group requested. We've got about three more weeks of that, and then I'll be doing a brief biblical history jaunt through the Bible to help people kind of understand the overview of the Bible. And that's the other topic that they requested, so that'll start in about three weeks. Love to have anybody join us. It is possible to do a new home group, someone that wants to lead one on their own. I'd be happy to provide all the information that they need and they won't have to come up with any discussion points on their own. That'd be great. We spend about an hour on Monday nights talking about the lesson and about another half an hour just in fellowship with one another, checking up on each other and seeing how we're doing through all of this. And Tuesday morning Bible study has been great because we're a bunch of women in the church who have, for the most part, we've got about 20 women who have figured out how to use Zoom, figured out that it's not that hard after all. And so we're doing the same lessons that we do on the home group. Love to have more people join us. Just let me know.
Well, we're like the children of Israel. We're, we're working our way through the wilderness here. It's interesting, of course, food is very important for us. On Wednesday mornings when we have our Bible study, so when we lost the fellowship hall, we lost a full breakfast. And then, then we, then we went to the West Campus when that opened up, and there we were able to bring food and then, of course, the virus. And we've been Zooming ever since. And I think Jana mentioned that too. Our, our membership or our participation has gone up since we've Zoomed because it's very easy just to roll out of bed and get on the screen or get on the phone and participate. So what we've been doing with Zoom and with the pandemic is that Mike has been producing a series of devotionals, scripture dealing with the pandemic. So he started with Exodus and the leadership of Moses. And we've had a lot of, a lot of similarities between what they went through and what we're going through with the, with the coronavirus. So that's where we are right now. Fellowship is very important to us and the guys are really good about participating in all the other organizations, charity organizations that we have.
Sure. Hi, Lisa. Presbyterian Women, this is our 12th year Presbyterian Women, and we start up our group. Every woman in the congregation is a member of Presbyterian Women. But some of us are organized into what we call circles. And we start in September, we finish in about May. This past year, we did a wonderful Bible study on the Ten Commandments called Love Carved in Stone, which we all really enjoyed. Circles meet once a month. Since we have not been able to meet physically, we've been meeting by, two of the circles have been meeting in Zoom groups. And the thing about Presbyterian Women is, you know, women, we all just, we nurture all the time anyway. So we're all busy calling each other, supporting each other, caring about each other. But we were able this year to donate socks and underwear. We did our Knock Your Socks Off program, and that entailed, that was 462 pair of socks and almost 100 pair of underwear that we were able to donate to Mercy House and the Shower Ministry. So we felt wonderful about. And we also donated gift cards. We're picking up a new charity this year called Skyview School, and we're so excited about supporting them. We donated gift cards to their families. We were able to do.
I know too that you've been leading a book club as well that meets every other month, and so you're gonna meet virtually if you need to or depending on restrictions?
Yep, we're meeting virtually at the end of this month. We're doing a Zoom group. We just read a wonderful book called The Book Women, The Book Women of Troublesome Creek. And if you didn't ever know that there were Blue People, look up the Blue People and you'll find out about that. And yes, we're meeting, we're meeting by Zoom and hoping that we'll, you know, get together. We meet every other month, fourth Tuesday of the odd month.
So our Church in the Wild group is meeting every Tuesday at 5:30. And what we do is we study the scriptures that we will be using in the worship service on Sunday. So yes, it does help with sermon prep. I get a lot of great ideas from that group, but it also helps the people that, that all of us that come together is we look at the background and the context and the culture of when these particular scriptures were written and who they were written for, and then how does that now move forward and apply that to us today? And so we get some great discussions about those scriptures. So we got a lot of good questions. Sometimes they do stump the pastor and that's great, and then I try to get back to them later. So anybody, again, it's an open group, 5:30 on Tuesdays. Love to have you.
Yeah, so in my opinion, daily time in the Word of God is one of the most daunting but most helpful spiritual disciplines that we can cultivate. I wanted to make sure that Canyon Hills Presbyterian Church was actually stepping out in leadership in that, in specific ways. And so the 5:00 PM Bible study is, is really our way of, of leading the way forward towards lifetime discipleship by introducing people to daily time in the Word of God, showing that we can establish this habit in our life, that we can protect this time, that it's not a huge sacrifice, it doesn't take a lot, but the benefits of it in our life, just being in God's Word, reading our Bible, studying daily, is something that can have a truly profound effect. So that's kind of what, why we're doing it. And, and I think it's a really, really important that, you know, we're, we're kind of setting the pace to establish those habits in our life.
Also, I think you're running our youth programs for students through virtual things, although those are digital natives. So is that a little bit different, running that with the student?
Well, what's been really incredible about our discussions with our students is that it's easy to buy into the stereotype that they actually want more digital content when the reality is, is that there's a real sense of, of digital burnout right now with our students. You know, it's, it's been, it's been tough to, 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 to set up times, you know, where we're on Zoom or doing something like that because there's, now that school is all online and their relationships are all online and everything, everything is all online, they're actually discovering the real, the real importance that in-person relationships have. And so it's been. And so it's been, it's been good that, that they're able to navigate the tools, but it's been tough because they really, really want to be in person with each other. Yeah, it's, it's, we're meeting virtually, but, but I think there's a lot, I think God is doing a lot of things in the lives of students right now.
...world, and this is a whole new way of evangelism, and I'm just grateful that we have this for our congregation and for those, our neighbors and friends and community who may be feeling disconnected.
Well, thank you all for watching about all the different ways we have to connect. I know one of the questions was, how do we connect? And I had actually put a little video together for that, but I was so bad at editing at that point that I was like, no, we should not use that one. But I can tell you how you can connect. It's very easy to get signed up for a group. If you go to our webpage, if you're a webpage user, you can just go to the top bar and you'll see Grow and Serve. You click on that, you go to the box that says Groups, and it'll drop you all the way down, and you'll see a little button that says Join a Group. And all you need to do is click that one, and it'll give you all the groups that are open and that you can join, and then it'll just ask you for information. So literally, it's just a few clicks of the mouse, typing in your name, and away you go, and that information will get to the particular leader, and you will be included in that, and then you'll get information about how to jump on to those Zoom calls. If you have a mobile device and you have our app loaded on your phone, it's even easier to join groups. You just have to hit the app at the very bottom. You'll see four little icons, and one of those says Groups. You hit the group icon, it'll take you straight to all the groups that are open, and again, you just need a few clicks and your name and email, and away you go. So it is that easy to join. If all of that is like, oh, my gosh, I can't do that, because I get it, because I had to edit videos this weekend, so totally get it. Here's the easy, office@canyonhillspc.org. Katie Kerr will get all of those emails, and she will get them out to all of us who can answer the questions and get you all signed up, ready to go. So if all else fails, office@canyonhillspc.org. Easy. Yes, Vanessa?
Yes, one of the questions, are any of these groups recorded and posted someplace else that can be viewed at a later time? And then it's taken over the vote.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go ahead and take that one. So with our livestream, anything that is livestreamed, so our 5:00 PM daily devotionals, our Sunday morning worship, all of those immediately after we hit...
And this town hall!
And, and this town hall. As soon as we, as soon as we go offline, that is automatically saved to our Facebook page. So if you go to Facebook and search Canyon Hills Presbyterian Church, there will be a little video button on that page. You can not only catch up with our last few weeks of daily devotionals, you can see, or re-watch our, our Sunday morning services when, when, when you really need to just hear an inspiring word. So everything that we do on our livestream is recorded. Most of our Zoom things, because those are done in confidentiality, like when you have Bible study, a lot of times that's a, that's a confidential group, and it's understood that you're doing life together and that that doesn't go beyond that group in order to create a deeper sense of vulnerability. And so our Zoom Bible studies usually are not recorded. You can't be a fly on the wall in those. But certainly any of our livestream things are, are there on our Facebook and on our website as well, though it usually takes a few hours or a day for them to show up on our website. But that, that, that's to answer that question. Please catch up on our devotionals and our Sunday morning worship, because all of those are recorded.
All right. No other questions. All right. So our last thing to share with you today is our video about how you can connect with mission and community service, because that team has been doing a great job finding new ways to support those who find themselves in very vulnerable situations now, especially because of the COVID virus and other things that are going on in our lives. So we want to share with you again what Mary Byrne and her team have been up to in mission and community service.
Good morning, Canyon Hills. I'm here with a moment for mission. My name is Mary Byrne from the Mission and Community Service Committee. During this time of quarantine and social distancing, just staying at home is helping others, but we are still called to try to reach out into our community to help those who are struggling. While the mission committee has had to adapt our community service activities since we can't do in-person volunteering, we found many ways to continue helping the vulnerable in our community with support from our congregation. We are continuing to support Shower Ministry Plus, who is deemed an essential service and is continuing to provide meals to the homeless of Garden Grove twice a week. We are collecting to-go foods, which will be given out to help the homeless between meals. Shower Ministry continues to ask for clothing donations, too. Because northeast of the well worship services have been canceled, we are not able to serve our monthly meal to these men and women who are overcoming addiction and abuse. We asked if there were other ways we could help, so instead, we will be delivering dinner to a group home run by Grandma's House of Hope that houses some of the women who would otherwise attend the Monday night service. Since we are not able to send volunteers to the Giving Children Hope Warehouse to pack backpacks during the lockdown, we have adopted a family from Melrose Elementary through the organization Lot 318 in Placentia. Our congregation will be providing a list of groceries and supplies to our family every two weeks to address specific needs requested by the family. We dropped off our first load of groceries this week. Our mission committee and Presbyterian Women's group has formed a new partnership with Skyview Elementary School in Orange, which is an alternative education program that focuses on homeless youth from kindergarten to eighth grade. The school has a resource pantry where these students' families can pick up food, toiletries, and other supplies. Improving the home life for these families will help the students immensely, especially during this difficult time. This week, we dropped off a shopping cart full of toiletries and cleaning supplies, as well as Target gift cards to help these at-risk families. So you might be asking yourself, how can I help? You can donate to-go foods to Shower Ministry Plus. You can donate toiletries and cleaning supplies to Skyview Elementary School. You can sign up to provide groceries one week for our adopted family through Lot 318. Donate supplies by arranging a porch pickup or drop-off with the mission committee. You can make a financial donation to mission to help us purchase supplies. Go to our church website to offer to help with our mission projects or to make a donation to mission, or you can contact me directly. Even during these difficult times, let's continue to be the hands and feet of Jesus in our community. God bless and stay safe.
So thanks for hanging out with us today. A little extension of our worship service. I'm so grateful for all the work, for all the people that have gone into producing both worship and our town hall to try to get you guys all up to date with all the wonderful things that are going on. Please, please, reach out to us because we want to be connected and contact you. So let's make sure that those contacts and connections stay strong. So many different ways to be involved, even though we can't be gathered together, but even, even so, there will be a time where we can do that again safely, and we look forward to that. So if you have other questions, please feel free to post those on our Facebook or our website from the livestream, or just email us directly at the office, and we'll be glad to answer any other questions. So are there questions? Anyone has last minute? We are good. Thank you very much. Let's pray and have a fabulous rest of your Sunday. Lord God, we thank you for all the ways that people are sharing love, that they are setting aside the things that divide and instead focusing on the love that unites. Lord God, help us to continue in that direction and that way as we learn how to be church all over again. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.